Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Independent City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, the 23rd of May. It's 7:30 in the morning. Let's make sure that councilors are all here, wide awake, and looking forward to another beautiful day. See, you know, I'm a little levity. Smile. Yes, it was warm up to sleep last night. Councilor Chief, you have minutes from 25th of April in your packet. Are they okay with you?
I move to approve the minutes of April 25th.
Second discussion, all in favor, 65 of us saying aye. Aye. And close, Mr. Carey, thank you very much. Our Hope County Sheriff is scheduled, but he'll be here in a little while, so we stepped aside behind some school buses this morning, so we're gonna just work him in. Kristen Larson, don't see her here yet, we'll try to work her in. Also, under public comment, I also have a request for Matthew Lynn to speak to us. You're up.
Okay.
Told you we'd do things right along here.
Good morning. Uh... I just wanted to... Okay. There. Thank you. Okay. Dear City Council, I am here today to discuss the future of Mechanico. As you know, my note is coming due this September 20th, at which time the balance of roughly 185,000 is due in full. For several reasons, which I will explain, I have been unable to secure a conventional or private loan for this amount. In both instances, the perceived value of the real estate does not justify a loan of 185,000. Lenders look for properties with high loan-to-value or LTV ratios, and both lenders I worked with highlighted the current property value of roughly 210,000 did not present sufficient equity for them to satisfy their risk assessment. Additionally, the history of the property, as an old gas station, presents challenges and red flags to any new lender and requires, based on Act 2, environmental testing, which is very expensive and only exacerbates the economic challenges of a conventional or private lending. In light of these challenges, I humbly ask you to consider this offer, which I share in good faith. On the due date of September 20th, I will make a principal payment of 25,000 and ask for a two-year extension of our current note and interest rate. I will continue to make payments on this note during the two-year extension, and I believe that with this large payment and two years of additional principal reduction, we will be in a much stronger position to seek conventional or private financing. With the likely trend that property values increase over the two-year period coupled with principal reduction, a favorable LTV will be realized, making the property financeable at that time. I know that this is not the first time I've come to the council to ask for your help. The fact is, together we've incubated what I believe has become a unique destination that appeals to locals and tourists and has been an integral part of the recent history of Independence. People enjoy Mechanico and IndiPit BBQ and write about it on Facebook. In fact, two new five-star reviews just in the last week alone. Of significant news is the update that IndiPit BBQ, run by Roland "Ray" Walter, is now leasing Mechanico and has signed a multi-year contract to run the pub and restaurant full-time. I am thrilled to have a talented and passionate barbecue master now at the helm, and Ray is excited to be doing what he loves. The pub business dovetails nicely with Ray's cooking, and after his first season last year running the restaurant, we have reached agreement for IndiPit BBQ to lease the entirety of Mechanico Pub. What began as a seasonal concession stand has now matured into a bona fide restaurant offering high-quality barbecue and local craft beers. In conclusion, I ask for your agreement to extend our note so that we can continue to build sufficient equity to refinance and pay you off, and we will pay 25,000 honor before September 20th, 2017, and continue to make monthly payments. Thank you for consideration. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I'm gonna send this over to staff, and they're gonna, and I'd like you to meet with our staff, and they'll take a look at this, and they'll be bringing this back for further consideration. Could I ask one question? Please do. So, in this agreement, are you anticipating being year-round, open all year-round?
Yeah, at this point, you know, and as you know, in the early years, we couldn't quite do it, it was very seasonal. Now with Ray, I mean, this last year, it was a little spotty in the winter, he was ill for, you know, a chunk, but essentially, he's running it full-time, and at this point, he's, it's his beigie. I've, you know, handed it over, I'm just the landlord, and he's, I mean, each year, our business is growing, so yes, it's a year-round.
And I have a couple of questions too, Matthew. The loan-to-value, you said, the property value is currently set at 210,000 by the lenders. What is the percentage that they are willing to loan on a business like that?
Typically, you know, 75% LTV is about as, I mean, that's the most extreme any lender's gonna even look at. And I should note, I think it's relevant, that the 210, you know, obviously, the value range, there's a range probably, but that number is really based on what they consider income approach, looking at the lease and what the income from the lease, and then that, they extrapolate value. And so, well, you know, it's an awesome property, it's well-located, you might think, you know, oh, it should be worth so much more than that. The reality is to put a business in there that can pay and not strangle them with, you know, unrealistic lease, this is kind of what the value in their eyes looks to be. And when you, you know, the 185, that's the rough principal balance, you know, right there with the 210 or even thereabouts, you're almost at an 88% loan-to-value ratio, which is, you know, considerably higher. If you do the math, using, you know, even just taking 25,000 off of the 185, plus a couple of years of more principal reduction, and a couple of years of the increased market value, you're working in both directions, and at that point, you know, I run the numbers, and it's like a 65% LTV. So it definitely helps get us over the line.
And remind me again what your monthly payment is?
Right now, it's 1155, 1,155. And that's the thing, the business, we can, we can pay, you know, we've been paying, the business generates enough money to pay, and the problem is going, you know, you guys have been so good, and we got this, this opportunity through the city, but going outside and having to explain the environmental issues and go through all that, it becomes, it just, it ends up not working in the conventional world, but with this economic development sort of angle, it has worked and will continue to work. I mean, it's generating, it keeps getting stronger and stronger.
And have you done, or has the city done DEQ testing on that?
I have done it and satisfied the state. That was done a number of years ago, and we got a letter of no further action from the DEQ, which essentially cleaned up an outstanding issue there that dates back to the early 90s when they took the dirt off-site. So it does have, you know, I mean, I'm very comfortable and happy with that. However, any new lender, even if they see that, they, they want you to go through the Phase 1 and Phase 2 at, just out of their risk aversion, and, you know, unfortunately, that's about $10,000. So then you add that to it, just a hit alone, and it's like, man, I mean, it doesn't work that way.
Okay. Would you, and I know this is treading into staff territory, but I wanna ask anyway, would you consider reviewing this again in a year instead of two years?
Absolutely. I mean, I, I just wanna be, you know, I, you guys have been so patient with me, and I know it, I don't wanna keep coming back and asking for more. I really think that, you know, this, the math that I'm doing shows that we can make it, two years really makes it work. You know, yes, a year is the best you can do, I mean, I've put everything into this property, my heart and soul, it's a, it's a very significant part of my retirement, family's future, you know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna lose it, so anything I can do to keep moving forward. And I think that's the ultimate story here, is that the trend is positive, it's evolving. I'm now out of the picture, that might make a lot of people happy. Ray, you know, bless his heart, he's been incubating his business in town for a number of years, and now he has a spot, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Sheriff, Councilor Day.
I don't, I applaud Mechanico's money, and actually, I ate there for the first time last week, and they do have good barbecue. And depending on what ambiance you want, we could say it's okay. What I noticed, though, was if you wanna run a year-round restaurant, you're gonna have to have more closed spaces, it seems like. It just doesn't seem like, I saw people moving around because it was in the sun, now, but you're, and you're not out of that because you're the landlord, so the landlord can put capital into a, into a business, so, yeti plan?
Yeah. The plans, basically, there's a cupboard, the side that has the covered area. We've, over the years, I mean, one of the additions, it came a little late this season, but we, we have a really nice big wood burning stove in there now. I mean, and that's one of the challenges with this property, is that it's not your normal animal. It's, it's an old metal building.
Unique.
It's unique, and so it's like, it's hard to heat it, it's hard to make it comfortable in the winter, but yeah, we wanna enhance that covered area, we, you know, bringing the heat into the little icebox, I mean, that right there really helped out a lot. And, and we know that during the wintertime, it's a, it's a smaller crowd, so we can keep them in the main establishment, crank the heat on, and we can survive. So, but absolutely, over time, you know, as, as the landlord now, you know, not focusing on day-to-day operations and having to deal with that, the idea is to, you know, start looking at capital improvements to enhance the, you know, the finishes and, and, you know, you look at it, you can see there's still so much potential, so much yet to do, but it is, it's a unique little animal there.
I can see where it'd be difficult to invest money into something that you don't know what's gonna happen to you a year out.
Exactly, and the seasonality, I mean, it's, the town, this town is, it's just a fact of life, that it's a very seasonal venue. Certainly, our, our spot with the challenges, it's not easy to heat up, and so it, it's, it's been a challenge, but the trends are excellent, and, and I think that as a testament to that is the fact that now I have a bona fide restaurateur that is, you know, running, and so that to me is, is a good milestone. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for coming in, and I know you'll be looking forward to visiting with staff on this guest, Mr. Klein.
Yeah, I'm glad you got a complete proposal, please.
Okay.
Okay. Other people who, under public comment. All right, I don't see anyone moving forward, and we'll just, we're gonna work our, our guests in when the sheriff gets here.
I'm sheriff.
Oh, there you are. I snuck in while Sheriff come forward. Excuse me, I was focusing on our speaker. Good morning, and welcome to Independent City Council.
Good morning. Apologies, I'll be a little late, but I got behind every bus between here and down, so. I just wanted to pass on some information about kind of what's going on countywide, not necessarily just with Brown's, but across the county in terms of law enforcement. In September, we started the Mobile Crisis Response Team, where repairs and clinician with the deputy, they write a card, and they respond to calls, whatever's going on. And that program has been around for a long time, just we were able to start in September. And comparatively, so, from September to December, 15 versus 16, we're up about 85% on just the number of calls across the county, not just for the Mobile Crisis Team. So calls are up. And that same type of period, from January to August, 15 versus 16, it's about 87%. So regardless of Mobile Crisis Team or not, we have a lot of need, this is, and this service has calls from Dallas, Independence, all the different agencies. The biggest change between January and December, so 15 versus 16, we're up, we're up 74% altogether, so just calls versus last year. So it is a significant amount of calls, and the thing is with Mobile Crisis, calls are, it's very time-consuming. It's not something you just go, take care of, and leave. Sometimes the deputies are on the same call for, you know, three, four, five hours, depending on what the circumstances are. So it's, it's a significant investment. So that's going great. We, it's run off a grant through the state, and it was re-upped for another year, starting July 1st, so we're still going. These per venture and existence across the state have been for a long time, and they're all from the same grant funding, and they've all been ready to renew and review, so hopefully we can get in that same track. The other thing I wanna talk about is texting 911. Is a new service starting Monday, that anywhere in whole county, doesn't, whole county, Marin County, you can text or call 911. They prefer you call, but if you can't call, you can text. So texting to 911 is more time-consuming than a phone call, so that's why they don't want people just to report regular stuff, and they could call, they just would rather, actually, a phone call may be made if possible, but this'll help out, instead of having to relay services for those that are deaf, we're able to just have a conversation, so, which is, which is good. So no bugs that have been reported yet on the system, so it's going good. The other thing I wanna talk about is our jail real quick. We are currently, we're averaging about 130 minutes a day, that's kind of what our average is for the last few months.
What'd you say, Matthew?
About 130. That's where I remember where we're at. There was, earlier in the fall, we were up to about 170, and it was just out of chance, because there wasn't really one thing that we could determine that was the factor for that, but we're back down to where we should be in terms of our normal history. Couple of interesting facts, though. Last year, we had an average length of stay per month of 18 days. So far this year, we're at 25 days, which is, we booked four people. Judges are keeping people in custody longer, just maybe they have a different philosophy now, but we are going forward with a higher length of stay in our, in our population, so out of the 130, 30 are females. That's also probably about 100% increase from last year about this time. We just never had that high population of females, but, but we do, so it's a little more diverse in there. We have room at the end, I've heard people say, for the jail, so we still have room. We're looking at other ways for generating revenue from that, for in our other counties and other kinds of things like that, so we're doing a lot of work in that jail, and I hope it provides a good service for you guys in this community. So if there's ever anything that comes up or questions or anything like that, just all you guys call or, you know, I'm open for anything, so that's all I have, I just wanted to bring a little update, so if you have any questions.
Questions for the sheriff?
Just a quick, you had mentioned on the text 911, the ability to have a conversation, and I had understood that there was inability to respond, so that's incorrect?
Ability to who, to respond?
For you folks to respond back.
No, no, we, yeah.
Okay, so that can be an ongoing conversation. They're not ideal, obviously.
Yeah, on Mondays, when it went fully live, it's been live for about three months. There have been new testing with people from the school for the deaf and all that, get there, but, so yeah, it's back and forth, but it's, you know, 130 characters, yeah, so you just gotta be precise, so.
Additional questions? Thank you for taking the time to go visit us, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. We're gonna keep moving forward, I don't have anything I need to really report at this point. We're gonna go right into council leaders' underreports, and Councilor Day.
I have, I have something to report, but we're gonna spend a lot of time on my desk today, I'd like to press on it until the next meeting, if we could, I'll hand it up today for a quick postpon.
Sure, just fine.
And singles for parks and recreation, we haven't had, I don't know when we have meetings anymore, so Sean could probably get us better up there what's going on than I can.
Yeah, we have, we, we missed the last couple of meetings, so it's been a little while.
Okay.
Martin, what was happening currently?
Something in the heritage. I think struggling a little bit this year, but I think we'll rebound, and it's, it's the vendors in particular, we're really trying to focus on our heritage aspect, and expand sort of a historic recreation area. Would that be of an assessment, Tom? Yeah, create that. Get in some more hands-on historic crafters, some delos, areas where children and families can participate in more of the festivals, so. Music lineup is coming along nicely, and, but all of this, others have contributed to that, and it's, I mean, it's going to be wonderful, and I'm sure we'll hope for the level to grow.
Mm-hmm. There you go. Anything else I want to add?
Planning commission, I don't think, it requires a whole lot, but you've pretty much seen everything that you've seen recently, so I think our model is pretty good about all of these subjects.
I, I assume that, but I didn't want to.
I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. City Manager, your report.
Morning, Mayor, Members, Council. So just a few things, a little shorter than last time. So we had a cleanup this weekend, and we were overwhelmed a little bit with our success, I think. Councilor Day, as you contacted me on that, we had, we don't really go to a formal report on this, but it was our, it was our, I believe, our largest crowd ever, and it was just a continuous strain, and people were calling at least years worth of materials anymore. So we're, there'll be some after-action consideration of what happened, but we did shut down about a half an hour early because frankly, with the, at that point in time, it looked like we were running out of garbage trucks. The events did pull back in, but at that point, we'd already decommissioned the event, and so there was no point starting back up. So, but it was a great event, and I think people were really happy with it. By and large, it's all, it's mostly independent people, the staff that have volunteered for it, so we would like to see a little more participation from our, our neighborhood community on that if we could, but so far, that's not been, not been the case.
Three of my, three of my neighbors participated, and every one of them was complimentary of the people, the way it was organized, handled. They said, yeah, the long, the long, but you could see why when you looked in front of you and behind you, so it really went, congratulations.
Thank you. Well, the sheriff, the police department did the, you always work on this long, the public works, so.
And the devil's advocate, me, insists that I ask you, how many staff members do we send to Monmouth on their cleanup day?
What do they have a cleanup duty?
Thank you.
I have no idea. So, of course, then the devil's advocate, me, responds, how many people do we have that are helping with our SRO with the schools, and the pool, and on and on and on, but that's a conversation maybe we ought to have at some point in time, because I think there is disparity in our idea that we are getting, we would put more effort into it. So we had a successful ITech meetup flying in, Sean put that on together with the help of, oh, Nike, or not Nike, but Intel, and who else was with the ITech, they'll fly in.
Well, you know, Steve was asked, we had the Roswell Flight Test Crew, Cap Day Machinery, and Howie Call, which is a new AEB company.
So we do have some definite interest in an ag tech education center, and that location has a lot of sense. Anyway, we are...
Excuse me, what location makes sense?
We were at the Oak, the Oak School, the Oak.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so they have, okay. So, yeah, it's a good location. We are getting a lot of interest downtown, with a couple of businesses that are coming in, and we were even having to entertain some interesting independent stations at this point, so no promises there, just to let you know that they're starting to get a level of interest, and we'll be at least visiting with one prospect here shortly, I may have. We have our new planner in place, a gentleman named Zach Pelts, he's, he's with AKS, he will be in on Wednesday mornings and Thursday afternoons, just holding regular hours, and then of course, working in his office on any project related to things, so we have form anyway, but those regular hours will be posted or are posted, and make themselves available, at least those types of drop-in, you know, drop-in folks, and then we connect with him elsewhere if he can pick, say, on his office. So I think, as you know, oh, let's see, my next budget committee has met, and I think that has had a good end, so they're in their process, ours is ramped up, and coming to council here soon, as you know. We've cut the plans in from independent subdivisions, so those are being reviewed, as for a Phase 1 network. Public Director, Public Works Director interview that'll be occurring later this month, we had a pretty good response to that, we're pretty pleased with that, we've got good panel folks to do that interviews, a couple of outside folks will help us with narrowing that down. We hope to have, in the, probably by the second meeting in June, we hope to have the ITech conversion for you started underway, the training, and let you get your, get on work with what we're doing with the, the meeting software that we have. And then finally, and then finally, in the, in the spirit of sharing our expertise and our staff, our Finance Director has provided some technical assistance, and will provide some more technical assistance in person, to the City of Jefferson, the system with their financial management software. They've gone through a change there, our former City Manager, Brad Ellis, is now the interim over there, and he, he remembers, you know, he remembers us, and we had a meeting yesterday, and he asked for a little help, and we're happy to provide it. So, that's all I have for today, unless there's questions.
Questions from the manager at this point?
I had a couple of questions on the management team meeting for May 3rd. Somebody named Bob, and I'm not sure if Bob has, the hope is that Judge Butterfield will get final approval for traffic diversion today.
Better than Chief Mason. Chief Mason.
Okay, what does, what were they diverting, or what's the traffic diverting?
It is...
Do you wanna speak to that? Yeah, I can. The traffic diversion program is, it's kind of like, say you get a traffic ticket for CFO, or for operating mobile communication device, or something similar to that. It's the ability for the court to go through a diversion program, and it's an online program that they go through, and then they have the ability to reduce fines and...
That's fine, I thought we were recording traffic off, off 51 or something.
Into the air markets, I'm hoping.
Oh, right now.
We don't want any more of those combines on 51. What is eye and eye testing?
That's infiltration.
That has to do with the sewer and the rod?
Right, that's something for these, that's mode testing, basically. See what, see what's more comes up.
What is a U?
Oh, I know, that's it, from you.
Thank you. Okay. So are there any other questions? I think, Mr. Klein, I think you're up for the next item. Do you amend the Independence Development Code? Are you an attorney, or?
Yeah, I'm only up next because everybody else is on vacation, but I have asked the City Attorney, Carrie, probably to be here to respond to questions. You have the proposed form of legislation, as well as the staff report that accompanies that. At this point, it should reflect the approach that you took last time with your approvals, so with that, if you have questions, I'll let Carrie field us for you.
All right, Mr. Councilor, thank you for being here.
You're welcome, thank you.
Appreciate it. Council members, you have the proposed ordinance and staff memo in your packet, do you have, does the ordinance do what you wanted it to do?
Well, we also received an updated card.
That is, that's a different, that's a franchise issue. So related to the land, the zoning, does this look okay for people?
So maybe if, it might help if I just sort of walk through what you're looking at, just to kind of ground everyone in terms of where we were. So I just want you to know that this is a somewhat revised ordinance from what was in front of you at the last meeting when I attended. It incorporates the Planning Commission's recommendation of that 250-foot buffer around residentially-zoned property, but industrial uses. And I just wanted to point out to you where that is invented in here, so that you can have a chance to see what it looks like. If you look on page 19 of your packet, it's page 11 of the amendments. So if you can see, it says Section 20 in the middle of the page, it's amending Section 40.021 of your code, and then there's A sub 2, are people tracking with me? Okay, thanks. And so it says within 250, 250 feet of a public library, public park, public playground, public recreational... public recreational facility, public athletic field, or residentially-zoned real property. And that tag online, residentially-zoned real property, appears on that page, and in the subsequent 41.021, two pages later, page 21 of your packet, 41.021A2, and then 42.021A2 on page 23 of your packet. It's the identical language, and it only appears for those industrial zones. I just figured that was kind of the most simple way to embed it in there. You have other special use limitations for other city zones, but it doesn't, it only references the public library, all those public things, and not residentially-zoned real property. So, that is the primary difference between the text that has previously been put before the planning commission and the council. You can also see that the way that I amend your code looks a little different than the way that it was previously presented to you, because I tried to shrink it, I just wanted to make it more, I guess, efficient, to just say, or many, rather than setting out the entire contractions. So, if you think, goodness, this is much shorter than it was before, it doesn't change those amendments, it just is only those amendments.
Carrie? Mm-hmm. On page seven of the packet, which is 15 of 65 in our whole packet, under 23-021A2, cites all the other facilities, but not 250 feet on residential property. Is that because that is just dispensary and retailer?
It's an IMX zone, so that is not an industrial zone, that's a mixed-use zone. So, that's, that's exactly, I think, I think that's, I think the answer to your question is yes, to give a longer answer is the residential.
The same thing would be true on page 16 of that, of the ordinance, under A253.021, which does mention producers and producers of both recreational and grow sites for medical. And that's not an industrial zone either, but it doesn't mention the 250 foot on residential.
Correct, it's at 52.021 is agricultural.
I was a little, a little concerned about the inconsistencies, but I understand that now.
Additional questions? Does this look okay?
Are we going to eventually have a map that goes with this that is accurate to the actual setbacks?
So, I, the way that I understand it is that a map was distributed to you this morning, it is for illustration purposes. There is, there isn't a way to accurately reflect on a map precisely where these uses would and would not be permitted, and instead, you're going to be governed, the city staff will be governed by the text of the code. It's the same for all other uses in your zone. You measure the thousand feet or the 250 feet, and it's going to be dependent on a case-by-case basis.
So, this is, so what we're doing here is consistent with how we do other things?
Correct.
Right, use this, and coupled with our official zoning map to interpret the code. If there are no additional questions, this is an action item. We have on page eight of the packet, language. Austin, please do.
I move to read the proposed ordinance, Council Bill number 2017 dash 02 in full, as the text is contained in the council packet for the first time.
Second.
A motion, second discussion, all fair, six, five, ten. Aye. And opposed, motion, Carrie. And, so the, an ordinance amending the Independence Development Code, Subchapters 13, 20, 21, 22, 23, 33, 54, 40, 41, and 53, and adding sections 20.021, 21.021, 22.021, 23.021, 23.22, 022, 33.021, 34.031, 34.3032, 40.021, 41.021, 42.021, and 53.021. I bet Karen was going purposely. I'm impressed, that was a good job. Well, thank you, thank you, thank you, I appreciate that.
Skip that, Michelle.
Thank you. Okay, here we are. I lost my picture here. Read my numbers out. We approved it in the first half, so we're ready for the second, is that correct?
Yes.
Somebody would please move that.
I approve the proposed ordinance, Council Bill number 2017 dash 02 for the second time by Title I.
Motion, second, by Diana. Discussion, all fair, six, five, ten, aye. And opposed, motion, Carrie, thank you very much. I think it's a review this again. An ordinance, what we're doing, by the way, is this is how the charter reads, that we have to read something three times, inviting out of the vote, we can do it all in one sitting. An ordinance amending the Independence Development Code, Subchapters 13, 20, 21, 22, 23, 23, 34, 40, 41, and 53, and adding sections 20.021, 21.02, 21.21, 22.021, 23.021, 23.022, 33.021, 34.031, 34.032, 40.021, 41.021, 42.021, and 53.021.
Sold.
Thank you. And if somebody would like to make the final.
I move to adopt the proposed ordinance, Council Bill number 2017 dash 02.
Second. I have a motion, second, discussion. I think we're all okay, everybody all okay? All fair, six, five, ten, aye. And opposed, motion, Carrie, thank you very much. Okay, we have done that. Okay, I just want to make a comment. I really appreciate council staff and the public's work on this. It took a while, but we, we got there. Ms. Butch, I think you have the next activity for us.
Good morning.
The Resolution 17 dash 1450 is a revised resolution, and it replaces the Resolution 171447 that you passed in February 14th, on February 14th of this year. The amendments are to add that it applies to not only franchises that are current and unexpired, that we have franchise agreements for, but also those that we do not have franchise agreements for. So, this would apply to other providers that are providing services in the city that do not have a franchise agreement currently with us. The other change, I had put out a revised one in front of you this morning. Basically, it's just a formatting change, but there is one change. It was eliminated, the registration fee was taken completely out. So, that was another item that would have been taken out of the original resolution. That item and the linear fee provision were both taken out of the last resolution for, to be revised in this one. So, we've added in the linear foot revision into this one, but we are not doing the registration fee, so.
Questions for finance?
I do have a question.
Please do, Councilor Day.
I don't remember this from the first time we interviewed it, but Section 5, Page 2 of 2, Section 5, where basically the city council gives up their authority to the city administrator. Kind of against that. I think the city manager or the city administrator are bringing proposals to us, and we make the decisions. Something like rules regarding the activation of ordinances for wireless facilities and providers at the big point.
I don't, I don't believe this reads that the council gives up their rights. I believe you just delegate the authority to, to administer the code.
It says rulemaking authority.
Right.
Not administration authority.
Would our attorney be willing to? Well, when I can see, so Kristi Munson of our office worked with staff to draft the, a proposed version of it, but then was finalized after the packet was put together, which you can see by the distributed resolution. And in the version that was in the packet initially, that Section 5 was highlighted, which tends to indicate that that is a policy choice for city and staff to make, it's not a policy choice that our office will make, although we regularly recommend delegating administrative pieces of council functions to staff in order to speed up the process, essentially, so that staff can work on things, get, get rules in place that will govern these kinds of agreements and these kinds of fees. And whether or not you actually want to follow that recommendation is up to you. I don't know, David may have some thoughts.
I don't have any strong feelings, I mean, this is consistent with how a council internal format has always operated, in that you set, you set broad guidelines with your ordinances, and we write the specific rules to implement those, those policies. So, that's, that's normal practice in all levels of government. If you're going to be a role-playing business, you're going to be very busy doing a lot of things that we normally do.
Whole attachment fees for equipment negotiated regarding franchise agreements expired for the purpose of implementing. You could look at this a different way. What is the process, if the council has an issue with some of the rules that are being made, how does the council proceed to overturn those rules?
You wouldn't just tell us, that we don't like what you did, we don't think it's consistent with the policy and the resolution that we established, and so let's revisit that, and of course, we report to you.
Yeah, but how do we know what the rules are? It's not like you have to present to us for approval, they're just, you implement them, and if somebody complains to us, then we would know the rules are there, but otherwise, I don't.
We don't write them. We don't write a lot of the rules. I mean, I think that, you know, like personnel policy might be an example of rules, financial policy might be an example of rules, you, again, you write the broad strokes, and we just sort of duck the eyes across the teeth.
Yeah, well, I'm seeing a difference here between rulemaking and administration. I get the negotiations on setting fees and so on, but I would really like to see what the final documentation is that comes out of the city governing the franchise fees. I'm also interested in knowing the ones who do not have a franchise agreement right now, how will they be compelled to pay?
That's exactly what the ordinance does, and this resolution does. That's the whole point of this legislation in front of you, is to address those that are not under franchise, and so that there is a consistent floor for everybody.
Okay, can we then at least get confirm, I know that, and I must disclose here, that I'm an employee of MINEA, and I happen to know that MINEA is paying the franchise fees, but how do we get confirmation that, for instance, Charter is doing it?
That's proprietary information, so we really can't do. We can tell you that they are paying, that they aren't paying. What we can't do is tell you how much.
So, we don't know whether they'll be adhering to this new ordinance or not?
Well, if they don't be adhering to the new ordinance, we'll either, they'll either adhere to it, or we'll bring action, you know, we'll come to you for litigation, or we'll take the necessary steps internally that we always do to, to slow pace.
Well.
Their information, like, like MINEA's information is proprietary.
I understand that, but as, as a council, I've been advised several, as a counselor, I've been advised several times that Charter is not under a franchise agreement, and in fact, they are still negotiating for, what is it, nine years now, or seven years?
That much is correct, but again, this ordinance that you've adopted and this resolution set that floor amount that they have to operate under regardless of whether they're in franchise. So, that's the problem you're solving with this legislation. And that gives us, that gives us the staff the tools to make sure that they are in fact compliant, whether they're in franchise agreement or not in franchise agreement.
Okay, and when, when will notice on this go out to, or has notice already gone out to everybody? Will there be a new notice?
There will be a new notice to those, those operators that are providing services within the city that do not have a franchise agreement with us.
Okay. And just for my own edification, because there are several things that are referred to here, rule-wise and code-wise, this would be continuing the style of payment and the, the process for payment that's been going on all along, except adding, this adds internet to it?
That's correct, okay.
Additional questions?
Well, I think there is additional question, because I, I understand what Marilyn was trying to say, but I think that this makes sense. You've got, now you've got something you can say, hey, you aren't under contract, here's what you're going to do. You don't want to be under contract, we'll work on that, but you're going to be paying while you're.
Exactly.
I think, we have to, there's a definition, I know we're going, we're going here, but we have to be sure we understand what the definition of gross revenue is. You and I had a conversation this week, because I couldn't find it in the ref, where they were referenced, you found it up front, and you, maybe explain that?
Okay, so the, the gross revenue definition was part of the ordinance that you adopted at the same time you adopted that first resolution. That has not been updated in the code that's shown on our website, however, it is there in, under, and I believe it says.
Ordinances waiting to be.
Ordinances or code amendments that have not been codified yet.
Okay, that, that's why I ask if it was going to continue in the traditional manner it's been done so far.
Yes.
Okay.
As amended.
As amended. As amended, but it would still be paid on the same basis that it's been paid so far for TV and for telephone?
Yes.
Councilor Day.
Well, I think Marilyn, bear with me here, Marilyn, I think she lived in glory and trapped. The way, and I'm, this is my knowledge, but I'm not saying I'm right, okay? I'm just throwing this one out. My understanding is that we've got on our PNO, we've got, we've got a revenue line, and it says data, and then it says telephone, whatever, and it's also got TV. That's, that's a big revenue line. Now, down at the bottom, there's this miscellaneous revenue.
Right.
And that comes from various things like fees to turn something back on, or whatever. My understanding is that historically, MINEA has been paying on that top line, not including the one down below. So, now, wait, let me finish, maybe I'm wrong. But now, I understand it's not just the top line, it's the bottom line, which doesn't amount to a heck of a lot, I mean, probably less than $10,000 a year in the city. But, so that is different than the way Marilyn's saying is the way we've always done it. Now, maybe I'm wrong.
So, can I just, to be clear, the definition of gross revenue was found in the, or in the telecommunications ordinance that was adopted, that's posted to the website, it's not codified as you know, we don't codify everything immediately, we codify it in batches. So, six months to a year, we codify ordinances, and then update the entire code. But the definite regardless, the, the, the law of the land here is what the ordinance said, and that you adopted. When the, when the MINEA attorney contacted us about what constitutes gross revenue, we pointed them back to the ordinance and said, you're the attorney, you interpret what gross revenue means as in language in front of you. We're not going to, we're not familiar with how you do your books, MINEA, so you'll have to make that interpretation. We will either agree or disagree, but you need to come back and tell us what you're going to include in gross revenue. Based on the definition, this city council. going to include in gross revenue based on the definition this city council has adopted. So that's where it lies, we have to hurt back from MINET attorney beyond that last response.
And one of the issues is that MINET has difficulty, this is, I have a Don's out here, and you can address it too, has difficulty separating out turn-on fees or late fees or whatever, the small stuff, and breaking into what type of fee it goes into, is it data, is it telecom, whatever, and what city did it come from. Though there's some other issues that MINET has with it, and they've got an accounting system like we all do, that maybe, that makes it difficult to comment, and Don, you can address it. Is it doable, or?
So this would be the same challenge to Charter, with the looking at us.
I think so.
And so they figure it out.
Right. It's really not up to the city to say, to define the mechanics of the software.
I understand, but my point was, Marilyn asked you, is this the same way we're always going to do it? Well, they didn't do it at this point. So now, if you say yes.
Okay, I see what you're coming from.
Then they can say, well, we're doing it the way we always did it. Oh, I think we're throwing it into MINET's courts, and you guys got to figure out how to do it. And if that's going to take you out, get back to us, let us know, and we'll work on it.
Right.
Okay. That's cleared up. Additional questions? If not, this is an action item.
I move to adopt resolution number 17-1450 submitted in the agenda.
I apologize, I would like to make a friendly amendment to that suggested motion, because the one that you're actually adopting isn't the one that was submitted in the packet, it's the one that was distributed earlier.
Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a motion.
I'll second it.
I have a second. Discussion?
Yes, I'd say we should leave out section five.
I agree.
Or absolutely rewrite it, so it says more about what at least two of us are intending, which is, you do it, come back to us and tell us what you want to be able to do, and we'll prove it or disprove it.
And so maybe that would cover a form of report or something, this is, these are the rules we're adopting. Let them figure out the rules, bring them back to the council, and we can take a look at it and, you know, decide, oh, maybe we want to change something, does that sound reasonable?
That's fine, I'm not sure we'll be adopting any rules at all, but that's fine, that's a good approach.
Is that looking at it, everybody?
Okay, so.
Well.
No, I'm trying to make sure I'm clear here, is, so, does that mean we can leave in five with, and understand that there's going to be a report back to us on rulemaking? There's been no amendment or?
Right, that's what I'm trying to be.
We're, we, the motion is to pass this as it was given to us this morning.
Right.
And, but with an informal understanding that there's going to be a?
No, but you have directed us to return to you with any rules that we've prepared.
Yes.
And it's report.
Right.
And also to let us know when the ordinance is, what is it, what's going to be codified that you told us about?
Okay, so I think Kerry wants us to back up a minute, and I think you have two separate issues. One is, one is just to deal with the vote on the table. Secondly is, as a subsequent act, your directive has to bring any proposed rules back to you for, you know, to see what we've accomplished and say, you know.
I was going to get there, but, so, so that's what, is that what you're suggesting, Kerry? You're doing this in two separate pieces?
I just need to know, are we changing the resolution that was presented to you, or instead are we adopting the resolution that was presented to you, and subsequently staff has heard to bring any proposed rules back to the council?
And I think that's what I heard, is that what, my understanding is, we are adopting the motion as presented to us.
Right.
And the other stuff, we can talk about afterwards, okay?
Thank you.
That's how the right?
Well, it still doesn't.
We're voting, we're not adopting it.
It still doesn't clear up the methodology of payment.
That is a separate matter.
Well, how do we make it a separate matter from this document, from this resolution?
I don't even know what the issue is, to be honest with you. Again, the MINET attorney has been provided the ordinance, the ordinance provides the language of what constitutes gross revenue, that he should be able to interpret that. If he can, he should advise us, you know, that there is a problem with the ordinance, because I can't understand it.
That's why I ask if the expectation from the city is that the payment method that the providers are using now would continue in the same fashion?
The payment method should conform to the ordinance. I don't, and I don't know what that is, I don't know if that's the same method or not, but it should conform to the ordinance and this resolution, which sets the fees. Okay?
No, I can't in good conscience vote for that then.
Okay. So what we're going to do is, we'll vote on the ordinance, and then, come again?
On the resolution.
Excuse me, the resolution, my misspeaking, and then we'll come back and affirm that we won't, so additionally. So, we have a resolution in front of the motion secondary for the discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carries. The, with the request to staff, as was heard, that you'll bring back, as was discussed.
Yeah, we will report back to you on rules that are promulgating on this.
Okay, thank you. Should I take care of your clock, Tom?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Going to new business, Officer Headland, Alcohol Department.
Good morning, Mayor, councilors. Your pack will amend one for me regarding the applications that were submitted for the summer series for alcohol department. This is a, there's two separate applications because of the fact that there's so many gates, and each application will be taken with a certain. The only amendment that I'd like to make to what was submitted was that on both applications, there is a missing alcohol service license number, and so the, on page two of three of all applications, Alex's service license number is 522630.
Okay, so you're satisfied that's a valid number, we're all good with that?
I trust that that number is accurate. Yeah.
I have two questions.
Yes.
First one is, is, how is it determined that Rookies is going to be the one that's doing this? Does it go out for everybody, everybody can?
I don't have an answer to that question. This is what was presented to me, why Rookies does this, has never been addressed to me.
But, this is part of the compensation package, four hours, because he has been a coordinator that will put on the event, the summer series for the first, that event was, as going dramatic as everybody in the community is aware, paying it to pay for itself, part of the compensation package, is that he has an exclusive right on the distribution of alcohol at the event.
So how much has he paid for the event?
I'm sorry, what?
So you said it has to do with getting money back for the event, so how much does Rookies pay the city?
5%.
5% gross.
How much?
5% gross.
5% gross, okay, I'm going to ask that. I guess the only thing I would have, to me, it would be good to have, to offer this to other people, just because you should. I mean, it's a, we're not in the business to decide who gets, who wins. I mean, we got Rogue down, down the street, they're participating in a bicycle order, some kind of, you know, that's my thought, but it is what it is.
What's the rest of the council thinking? Do we just give it away for 5%? Or should we say, oh, I don't want this much, we got the beer.
So is this, so this is part of, this is, instead of paying a fee to organize events, am I correct? This is a combination, this is a combination of fee plus this, so it's part of the total compensation package.
It's part of the total compensation package to manage the whole summer series, so that includes providing the security, providing the setup, tear down, clean up, the whole my ER, it's part of that compensation, comes in the direct fee, part of that comes in the rents to sell alcohol at the event. We could, in theory, go back out ahead, and you know, I would suggest, not until the season's over, we could next season, take a look at rebidning the entire event management. Again, a reminder, this event is now tenfold or hundredfold what it was at, you know, less than 10 years ago.
So 5% makes sense.
We're pretty comfortable with what's been done, is being done, you know, is very much a win-win for both the vendor and the community, but a candid rebid of this would not be done.
And the reason we have, you know, the reason it's Rookies is because of Alex, you know. We've been very happy with Alex, what he's done with it, and that's just part of his compensation. That's great.
All right, I have to ask the questions, because then I don't.
Yeah, that's fine.
Is Alex in charge of all this, the weekend thing and all that? So he, instead of the city staff, does Alex owns Rookies or something? I don't know.
He owns, he owns Rookies also, he has control of the event.
Okay. So we have this event on numerous weekends, and this guy, we said, hey, you set it up, it's been successful, you set it up, and we're willing to let it go and continue to set it up, because it's easier for us that way.
Because it works.
Yeah, yeah, I can understand that, but I can't understand not trying to maximize the city's amount, amount of money the city gets when we're charging 7% on MINET or on data, we ought to try, okay, let's get more.
We can do that, I think we would be interrupting a growing event, frankly, and I think this thing is continuing to grow and become steam. We are getting better and better, using talent, more and more money coming in the door, more and more sponsorships coming in the door. I think we take this a really good chance of disrupting the energy that we've generated on this, on this event, but if we do that, this is becoming one of the premier events in the valley in the summer.
How much does the city make on this event?
I don't know if the city makes anything, I think the city views this as one of the, you know, one of the better services that we provide to our community. You know, the goal is to try and break even, not to make money on this event. I don't know whether we're doing that or not, I don't have the analysis.
Well, I guess I would also, I just keep clear that Alex is also the one booking the bands and doing all of the.
Yeah.
So it's not, it's not just they set up your, we always give the approach that, you know, we want this to essentially be a break-even proposition, you know, the city, we want a great event, we want to be able to achieve that, but ultimately, you know, the city's role is not necessarily to make money, it's to put on a great event, successful to everybody, and that's really kind of what we're building, that we've been able to achieve in the last five years, is continue to grow.
So I understand that the city's charter is to not make money, then why are we charging 7% to people who live for franchise fees? That's to support the city.
We're not making money on that either. The city does not have profits at the end of the day.
Okay. Anyway, to me, I think it's something that, I understand where we're going better now, thanks, I didn't know that Alex is so involved in it. I went in business, I never sat on something, he said, 5% is good, let's just keep going 5%. I'd negotiate a 10, and then maybe compromise something, I don't know, that's just the way I am. It's not the city way, I understand.
Well, it's not the priority, we're not, we're first and foremost about providing services to our community.
Providing alcohol.
Different from a big business community, whose first priority ought to be the bottom line, that's not our, that's not our.
I understand, but do you think it's important to be to buy alcohol in the city?
I think it's fundamental to the success of that event. So again, it's part of, it's part of the chemistry that makes that event work.
So I'm going to suggest a follow-up conversation between the two of you afterwards. We have a liquor license, and this is basically what has been done previously in the outline, in the physical layout, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Are there additional questions regarding liquor license and authorization here? If not, it is again, an action item for the summer series. That's on page 40. So I move to recommend approval of the temporary sales licenses, there's two licenses, so we can do both at the same time.
Yes.
The two sales licenses as presented in the council packet, and alcohol consumption within the designated areas, penny payment of all associated fees. I have a motion, second, is there further discussion? Here and then, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both motion carries. Why?
So we've had this discussion on a couple of occasions, but I've never asked for actually formal designation, delegation of approval on this. We've had a spot in history, I'll give the city a holiday, I'll lay it out here as easy as I could. It is, you know, it is a building that is, you know, it does offer a lot of opportunity. I know, I received an email earlier, council board, you sent, you forwarded me an email, and that's a conversation we've had on several occasions now, whether the Heritage Museum could find a good fit there. They've done that review, frankly, they can, to the cost of renovation, rehabilitation of that building, it exceeds any, you know, a reasonable investment in that building for the helping return. So what we're suggesting to you is that we, you know, we have a desperate need for downtown parking, we think they're cleaning up this site, and definitely demolishing this build, this building will provide us an opportunity to create some much-needed parking in that area, it'll give us an opportunity to, you know, it could be a future resale of a portion of that property, if demand comes for further construction downtown, it could support adjacent development in their parking requirements. A lot of reasons to expand parking in that location, it's a good location for parking, it may be a great location in the future for commercial use, but for now, within cleaning up the site, landscaping it, putting in some streetscape improvements, so that we start generating a little push on the streetscape out of the core downtown, start pushing it down a little bit, all makes sense, and so with your approval, we'd like to go forward, design this project, and come back to you with proposed bids, okay, kind of effect on this project. So that's what we're looking for.
Questions?
Yes, I do not disagree with the need for parking and the fact that that would improve downtown. Reading through your report, what I do disagree with is the methodology for financing it, what or for finding the money for it. Explain the change order and the 500,000 and GT construction, please.
Well, GT construction is the current contract on the Independence Landing project. This is, this could be, and has been approved in concept as, to be part of that overall project from IFA, the financing authority that we're dealing with. That, if you recall, is very attractive money for us, it means that we can get, we get the money five years before the first full principal interest payments due, three years before the first interest payments are due. So it's tied to your renewal district, that's why it works. It, you know, it's by far the best available funds for us for this kind of work.
And this was tied into the original agreement with Tocco Properties?
No, not with Tocco, that, Tocco is only a small portion of the overall project that we're doing, they're half of Independence Landing, two-thirds of Independence Landing. This project, the project that we have approval from the state and the IFA, the finance authority, infrastructure finance authority, is broader than that, it's about the downtown, it's a downtown effort, so that's the public, that's all the public infrastructure we are putting in. All of this work, if it's successful as it will be, will further exacerbate the park deficit, so that is the whole point of why they have concurred that this is a necessary part of the overall project, and so that's how we're approaching this. They have given us the informal nod, we have to go apply for, informize that, but that's where we stand today.
So, the bottom line is the entire, because this all rolls into Independence Landing in one way or another, correct?
Well, the overall rules is downtown, and the improvements we're making all facilitate a more productive downtown. Independence Landing, broad Independence Landing and Tocco piece absolutely are completely connected. That's what drives this conference, that's the core that drives the conference session.
I just, I have a great deal of problem with having a change order for a half a million dollars on a project that's already expensive, and. dollars on a project that's already expensive, and explain to me again, when this would be paid off and how it would be paid off?
So, the payments, again, first interest payments are three years upon completion of the, of the leasing funds, that's, that's capitalized interest for the period that you have no interest payments, and then regular interest payments for the next or two, and then after that, the fifth, or the full principal interest becomes due, and it goes out from there.
And I'm, I'm remembering when we had the old A to Z battery building demolished in order to put the new library up, and we found a contractor who was willing to do that for a dollar and take all the materials off of it, and certainly, they were in worse shape than the old city hall is. Just seems like there might be a better solution to paying for something like this than adding more debt.
I don't see that. I mean, we're, we're not only demolishing the building, but we're, we're going back in and repaid and outlot, putting in landscape, and putting in street lighting, putting in street furniture, new sidewalks, basically, it's the whole downtown look, it's the front of that property. Fighting somebody to demolish the building and take the, the mason for the price of the demolition, you know, on top of that, there's light, there's light and asbestos issues involved in this.
As there were with the other building?
I suspect we'll change some, we, we would be obligated to have that mitigated prior to moving on that, so there's costs associated with that, it's not insignificant. I don't know, I mean, I'm certainly happy to have somebody step forward and say, we can do it in that fashion, we're not, we're not approving the contract today, we're asking for your authority to go forward and start bidding the work, so designing and bidding the work. If somebody, you know, if you know people that would come by and make an offer of that nature, nothing's locked into, you know, plugged in as it's standing, it'll be locked in when we run a contract.
Additional questions?
I, I was not part of the council at the time with the battery place, but was the reason we were able to have demolished for a dollar was that there was actually some valuable material, I mean, some old wood structures?
It was, it was primarily concrete and, and some brick, and, or not, not red brick, but some cinder block type brick, and there was a lot of, Robin, you remember this better?
Yeah, I, I can speak to that. We did pay for demolition of the A to Z site, what we did not pay for demolition of was the machine shop, because they wanted the metal, that was behind the metal inside, and I believe that they actually reconstructed that building somewhere else, but that was the one that came, that they came and said, we'll just take it.
Because, because it, well, in my mind, I'm thinking, the old city hall doesn't have anything that redeemable, that we'd be able to talk somebody into, you know, giving us a great deal of demolitions.
Counselor Day.
Yes. I, I sat through budget meeting, and I sat through a strategic plan, I'm not sure I saw it where parking was a must-have on any of those. I, I think this is kind of like an idea, looking for a place to have, we, we need to have more parking, so here's where we need it, you know, there's other buildings downtown that shouldn't be torn down, there's other parks, we have, we have four lots down below that we could turn into parking, which would be poor use, and there's other things, I, I think I'd rather see staff take parking as an issue and address how they increase the parking, rather than just coming up with, let's take this building, since we own the land and the building, let's just do this, I, I think it's one-off opportunity. I guess we still tried to sell it for a quarter of a million dollars, I think, how about five dollars? Sell it for five dollars, and we don't have to do anything, and we're not going into debt another half a million dollars. We can't control what it's going to be.
There you go.
Yeah.
That's the big one, is that then you lose, you don't have control, and then all of a sudden, you can have a secondhand store in there, you can have a junk dealer, you can have a, a car parts inventor, you know what I mean? You, you can have a scuzzy place.
Except, the, the capitalistic system says that you're not gonna get those kind of things anymore.
For five bucks, for five bucks, you will, no, we aren't.
They still got a little, they still got a little.
Ask, ask them to do anything to be honest.
There is a building. Why do they have to build a building?
Right, and they, they wouldn't, and they think, you know, a, a secondhand place, which is what effectively was there last time, they, you know, they didn't tear out the building, and it just, it became a, an ice sword, and that's what we all got beat up for, is having an ice sword that.
Ice sword's across the street.
And we don't have control of that one, do we? No, we know, that's, that's a private project, and this is none of we have, we have control over, we can decide what we're gonna do, we're not giving up our rights to do anything. At some point, no matter what happens in there, you've got a lot of asbestos, it's gonna have to be cleaned up one way or another, it's either now or later, and at some point, we already have an opportunity to take on something that's already going on, so anyway, the capitalistic system doesn't always work.
Let me raise a few things, some of the, when I put this out to people in my area, they came back, about eighty percent said, this is just another way for the city to go into debt. Now, they don't park there apparently, or they don't have a problem with parking, somebody goes like that, but one person said, yeah, that's a really good idea, because we need the parking for, I've had people come into town and they decide to leave because they can't find a parking spot. But, so, so if parking is the issue, again, I go back, let's address the parking as an issue, and not decide on the solution without addressing all the potentials.
I think you were correct when you said this is a one-off opportunity, it is in fact an opportunity, it's, it's an opportunity based on the problem, we've had this facility now on the market for, for an extended period of time, no offers that even approached the, the asking price of it, the offers that we did receive were, they weren't, they did not come through. So, we have a facility that's, that is just becoming more and more unsightly over time, one more and more of a hazard, and it's off, it's off the tax walls, and it's not, so it's a non-productive facility that is an attractive nuisance for all intended purposes. This is our way of saying, we can, one, we can take advantage of the opportunity, purchase, you're right, we don't have any comprehensive parking solution, but it is an obvious solution to a, to at least part of the problem, and secondly, it is, the other part of the problem is cleaning up that part of, of the downtown and creating an opportunity for further, like, development in that area. I mean, ultimately, our, part of our mission, as I say, is to produce, to promote the success of the downtown, promote opportunity for success in the downtown, give people a chance to be, you know, to be entrepreneurial down there, but we need to give them the willingness to do that, so parking assists that, that, that effort. So, it's why we build parks, it's why we build sidewalks, streetscapes, it's why we invest in this property, these are all part of our mission on the economic side and the quality of life side for our community, it's not bottom line necessarily, but it ultimately will be bottom line.
How much is that property worth?
What property?
They don't say.
It's worth what people pay for, so far, they haven't paid any for it.
How much is it assessed for?
Well, the last appraisal we had on it was over four hundred thousand.
I, I tend to favor that, that third option down there, find a plan proposal which is, I would say, more revenue neutral, available for discussion and review by the council and population, because if, I think this is gonna be hard to sell to the population that it's worth four hundred and some odd thousand, and we're gonna pay another half million dollars to make it into a parking lot, that, that just, it, it's going to grate in the public. Well, when you say the value of four hundred thousand dollars, are we talking about the building, or are we talking about the building and the land underneath it?
Well, that, that was the building and the land, and again, we proceed no offers for that money, so it's unworth.
My point being that, that the land will still be there, we're not giving away the land, so as far as retaining value, we're getting rid of a structure that, as you say, and I know the roof has issues that are very expensive effects, private folks who've looked at that have not found that a positive effective place to be, so. And parking is an issue, if you've been downtown, particularly during the summer, in the early evening, as you circle the lot, hoping for somebody to pull out, they're parking over by the, the post office, the buildings surrounding there, the label parking, any spot you can find, you know, in a pinch.
I don't, I, that's probably correct.
Parking in the summer, on a Friday afternoon or Saturday afternoon, probably is difficult, but we don't know if this is the best solution, all we know is this is the solution somebody's saying here, 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 and, and I don't know where the payback comes, because at least, you're gonna have to make payments, somebody's gotta make payments in three years, and there's no money coming in from the parking, so that's, where I don't know where that money comes from, it's certainly not revenue neutral.
No, it's not revenue neutral, when we take enhanced value in downtown, well, it leaves more parking taxes, which is the payback, so you're a renewal district, so it's, it comes in at somewhere between fifteen and twenty dollars a thousand, because all, all their renewal taxes are devoted to paying off our renewal projects, so that, that is the whole point of our renewal district, is to create an opportunity for enhanced parking, enhanced development of value.
Different question, though.
But, no, we have intention that, specifically to that one, to save that on the basis of that.
Wasn't, when the Independence Landing was approved, that was urban renewal money, if I remember?
I'm sorry?
Independence Landing?
Yes.
Wasn't that a bunch of urban renewal money in that?
Yes.
And, and wasn't there a cap, like, I would say fifteen million or twenty million, that's something?
We're not approaching the cap, the urban caps.
Must have been right there last time we did it.
Yeah, no, there's two caps on urban renewal, one is the geographic cap, size of the district, it's twenty-five percent of the ge, of the geographic area within the city, we haven't hit that yet, and we're not asking to expand the district, and it's also twenty-five percent of the assessed value that goes, well, somebody helped, they would say twenty, it's twenty-five percent of the assessed value of indebtedness, we're not, we're not officiating debt, we don't have one either.
It can't be twenty-five percent, it must be some, anyway, I thought we were coming up.
I have noticed, but.
I can't remember, he's talking about the max, total maximum indebtedness that's allowed by the district, and we're, you know, honestly, I can't remember the numbers, I know we were getting up there, but I do, I mean, there was still space, it wasn't like we were using up every once bit with the Independence Landing project.
And we might be by the time we get done paying for the overruns or anything.
Well, that, that's, that's general obligation debt that's, that's issued on, has basis of property debt.
I, I would like to propose a motion here, I know we're still in discussion, but I'd like to get this to some kind of a head, I would move to authorize staff to proceed with the design of the city hall demolition and proposed new city parking lot and related steps, subject to final council approval.
Uh, motion, do we, do we need final council approval for, just to do, to go through the proposal, wouldn't the, uh, doing the contract, approving the contract, wouldn't that be final approval?
I would like to see the final cost before we just give.
Well, I, I think, that's what the motion, that's the S.
So, I have a motion, is somebody to second this?
Second.
Okay, I have a second. Uh, so, the discussion, is this substantively, this is, the motion that was just made, uh,
that's fine, I think that's pretty much consistent.
That's consistent with what, what the motion, that's what I was.
To be clear, counselor, to be clear, what you're asking is that we not proceed the contract until this council's had a review of those, those bid reviews.
Right.
That's kind of what I was, that, that you know, okay.
That's right, I read the, the original staff report, I have a motion, and I have a second. May I have one more question?
Please do.
Is there a timeline that we can still put this under this type of financing, I mean, do we have quite, quite a bit of time before we can?
Yeah, we will, basically, until we close out the ASPW offload, we have time, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Additional questions?
I think, you're asking for discussion.
We're discussing.
My notion, I wish you'd do it, then, until we had some kind of a plan that's addressed this parking, it's a big deal, let's have a plan that's addressed parking, maybe this is the answer, but I don't know where it is. That's, there you go.
Okay. We now have motion, a second, and we've had discussion, all in favor signify with aye, saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Okay, motion carries. We're gonna move promptly forward here, folks, are there, we have executive session coming up, are there any council housemen that we need to meet at this point?
Yes, one, sure, one.
Please.
I have been helping organize an all groups meeting, which is all the different groups that, across the two towns, that do different events and organize activities from Western Oregon University, through the Independence Downtown Association, the Chamber of Commerce, the library, so on and so on. That meeting is going to be Wednesday at noon at Independence Grill, and I wanted to invite Kathy to come as a representative of the Independence Hoppy Heritage Festival. And it's a no-host lunch, I'm not buying your lunch.
There's a, a point of conflict there.
Yes.
Okay, without other things, we're gonna move this, the independent city council will now meet the executive session with the purpose of reviewing exempt public records, the executive sessions held, or sent to O R, O two F regarding exempt public records, so the news media, that's being, so they'll be allowed to attend the executive session represented, the news media here specifically, a record doctor reported, and during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session, if we reason House and bill this, we may, the executive session, this time, the council will drink the conference room downstairs, for the duration of the executive session, once the executive session is adjourned, we'll return to open session here in the council chambers. Let's move promptly downstairs into the event center, which is where we're gonna have this, this meeting.